And welcome to our January meeting of the Borough of Gettysburg. Please all rise for a moment of silence for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay. Our agenda this evening includes a number of items, so we get to public comment, just keep that in mind in terms of what you're addressing. I do want to announce, because Councilman Lawson asked me specifically to, and it's worth noting, this Wednesday, January 11th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., there will be a reception honoring Tom Jolyn. This will be at the Sterner Building at the Rec Park for his many years of work with HABBY and improving the bicycle and pedestrian accessibility here in our community. So I didn't want, I would say it at the end, but I'd be cautious that I would forget. And she asked me specifically to note that, since she's unable to join us here this evening. A few announcements. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the December 12th, 2022 monthly general business meeting of the council, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5, the Sunshine Act, for the following purposes. One, to discuss matters involving the employment and the terms, conditions, and benefits of employment of borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. All right, we have the agenda as presented. Can I get a motion to approve the January 9, 2023 agenda as presented?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All right, if not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we have the minutes of the December 12th meeting before we have the motion. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Mrs. Butterfield, yes?
For the motion to confirm fees and charges and to confirm revenues and receipts for liquid fuel and revolving loan fund and for setting the work session dates, they were all seconded by a mysterious Mr. John.
I think I saw this in email, I'm sorry. Yeah. Is that right? So these are all actually seconded by Mrs. Judy Butterfield?
No, Mr. Lawver.
No, Mr. John Lawver, okay, I'm sorry. But I messed up the email that I saw. I thought we had mistakenly written John Butterfield. Okay. All right, so John will be John Lawver. If there's any question.
We'll get that corrected.
Any other corrections to those minutes? All right, if not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the council business meeting of December 12th, 2022, as corrected?
So moved.
A motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments further? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that will take us to public comment. So for public comment, please restrict yourself to items on the agenda. You have five minutes, please give us your name and address, and if you can use the podium for the folks at home, that would be appreciated. Any public comment at this time? Okay, it takes us on to current and old business. We start with our Department of Planning, Zoning, and Code Enforcement. Ms. Marshall?
Hi, we all have my report. I do have a couple of reminders. Our next planning commission meeting is Tuesday, January 17th. Monday's a holiday. Zoning Hearing Board Reorganization Meeting will be Wednesday, January 25th. And I also want to remind the public that council did opt to renew the trap neuter return program. And this time of year is the, an important time to try to get ahead of that, because as soon as we have a warm day, we have kittens a few weeks later. So if we can, if anybody has kittens or has cats that they are aware of that may not be neutered in their area, we have volunteers that can help trap if it's not something that you can do. You can contact our office, or you can contact Forever Love Cat Rescue. They're the ones who are facilitating the program for us. And then you do have two motions from my department, and they're both relating to the Gettysburg Station, formerly known as the Ready Site. They had obtained a grant last year, and one of the conditions is an environmental review. HUD has very specific requirements on who can be the responsible party for the environmental review, and in this case, it's us. And so these motions essentially establish an arrangement for us to be that responsible party. However, all costs are covered by the applicant, including any review or legal costs. And so we have both the, a motion to enter into the arrangement, and then also a motion for the resolution for the environmental review.
All right, I just ask, I guess, for any questions related to these two motions, if you have any on the front end, now would be an appropriate time. I would note the contract went, it seemed like, to great lengths to satisfy HUD's requirements, yet put all responsibility essentially on Mr. Harrison and his corporation.
Correct.
Interesting how many wherasons is required to do that. Any questions?
Not, I'd ask someone to make that, that first motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the execution and entry into a sub-applicant cooperation and indemnification agreement with 501 Richardson Acquisition LLC and Timothy C. Harrison as a condition of the Borough of Gettysburg, serving as the responsible entity, to conduct and submit a Part 58 Environmental Review to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of the Adams County Industrial Development Authority, ACIDA, for the community project funding congressionally-directed spending grant, which ACIDA received for the Gettysburg Station redevelopment project. Wesley K. Heiser, President of the Borough Council, and Sarah L. Stoll, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, execute, and deliver the sub-applicant cooperation agreement on behalf of the Borough.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Okay. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to our second related motion. I guess someone make that, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the Borough of Gettysburg as the responsible entity to conduct and submit a Part 58 Environmental Review to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of the Adams County Industrial Development Authority, ACIDA, for the community project funding congressionally, funding slash congressionally districted spending grant, which ACIDA has received for the Gettysburg Station redevelopment project within the Borough.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions and comments about this motion, which is for the related resolution? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any questions for Ms. Marshall? All right, Ms. English is not able to be with us this evening. Do you want to give a?
Yeah, I have just a couple things that Ms. English asked to pass along in her report. As you know, Harb wants to make sure that our historic properties are in good repair and aesthetically pleasing for the town, so the thank you hang tags are completed for Harb to distribute to homeowners within historic district that members feel, or members of Harb that feel are going the extra mile for maintenance on their properties. And also, the Gettysburg College will be picking up artifacts from the Getty Tavern site dig to be washed and catalogued in the spring semester, and the other half of the boxes to be catalogued along these will be completed during the fall semester. So the Borough has been, have many artifacts in its possession for a long time, and finally, we've found a group of folks that can help us properly work with those and get those to the Adams County Historic Society once that is complete, and that's the proper repository for those types of things.
All right. Any questions for environmental or stormwater historic preservation, I should say, attempt to answer? You may want to note that, I know it's more of a stormwater authority matter, but Ms. English did make a good kind of note of all the various liens and everything, and how that has kind of come together. So there are relatively few compared to the overall that are billed, but they do exist. Ms. Fissell is also not with us this evening.
Aside from her report, I just report to the council that we have hired the, a new full-time employee to replace Dave Reese, who recently retired. Bryson Albert has joined us effective full-time this week.
Great.
And he will, you'll be seeing him out and about, and we've received some good feedback from Mr. Albert's performance thus far. We already have a compliment on his interaction with some of the public, so that's good encouraging news.
Always good to hear.
Yep.
Any questions related to parking? The report generally just indicated that if you see the numbers, we are still in that uptick, as it has been. Public Works, Mr. Harbaugh?
Good evening. You should have my report. Just one highlight on my report, especially for the community, the resident, borough residents, we're starting to pick up Christmas trees, urging the residents to place them on top of the curb, not in the street, and along the, along the alleys, and we'll come by and collect them up. There, if they don't want to wait till we get around to collect them up, there is two drop-offs. One out at the Rec Park with, in the parking lot with a sign for Christmas tree drop-off, and down at our shed at 4507 East Middle Street, people can drop Christmas trees off for recycling. As well as, as the parking department, we hired a new employee in my department. His name is Brian Arns. He will start on January 2030. He will be replacing the position of Mr. Carbaugh that has moved on.
All right, any questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
President Heiser, maybe make, make, excuse me, I just have laryngitis, I promise I'm not sick.
It's not time of year, right?
It's gonna be a quick meeting, because I can't talk very well. So, do you want to say anything, since you mentioned Christmas trees, about definitely recycle, don't burn them, please, in the Borough?
Yeah.
People do it.
Especially in your fireplace.
Don't put them in your fireplace.
Yeah, I'll be there to visit you.
Please recycle them, drop them off.
Yeah, and that is, I know that there has been a request from the folks that are doing the film to keep your Christmas decorations up. The Christmas tree in your window probably should not be included in that, because they do have a finite lifespan. And they will.
They will ignite.
Ignite, yeah. All right, thank you. Clayball, engineer, sir?
Good evening and Happy New Year to you. I do have, you have a copy of my written report, and I have one thing that I want to highlight, and that's regards to the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project, and the motions that are on your agenda relate to this as well, at least one of the two there. We did progress the design project. As you know, the, the design is currently scheduled to happen through this year of 2023, and looking to go to construction in 2024. So we have plenty of time to complete the design. At this point, we've submitted the general permit to DEP for the pipe discharge into the stream. We had to complete some televising in the month of December. You might have seen the USG trucks out that were doing, trying to televising. While we were there, we were also furthering and advancing that investigation on that pipe that comes off of Chambersburg Street between the Gettysburger, that little alley there. So we were able to get some more information on that. We weren't be able, still weren't able to get the entire way through it, but we got some more information on it. So the other thing is, we are pretty much wrapped up with our CSX permit application. We'll be submitting that soon. That is critical path to try to get those two permits in and underway. And the only other thing there is, just this week, I heard back from our traffic consultant who completed the, the study on if we would make the alley one way, what would it do to traffic signals? So I'll give you a little appetizer there, is that it, it's a negligible effect to the traffic signal. So I'll give you a full report on that within the next month or two here, and we'll be doing a presentation probably at one of your upcoming Borough workshop meetings to decide whether, ultimately make that decision on whether we want to make the alley one way or not. So stay tuned for more on that. So that's the skinny on the design there. As you know, this project is about a $3 million project. So far, we have the design funded and some of the construction, but not most of the construction. We were able to find, I talked to you guys back in November, and you made a motion in December to go ahead and apply for ARPA H2O grants. That's ARPA federal funds that came down, and they funded the H2O program to fund water resource type projects. The Gettysburg Interloop happens to have, more than 50% of it is water resource-related. So it was a perfect opportunity to try to get some of that Gettysburg Interloop project funded. So we did get those, in December, you, you authorized me to get those applications, and we were under a deadline to get it in by December 21st. We were able to get those in in time. The motions that you have on, on your gen, agenda are in order to follow up administrative, it's just administrative procedure that we need to have a resolution on file for those grant applications. And then those resolution also authorizes Charles and I to enact the paperwork, should we be lucky enough to get, get the funds. And there's two on your agenda there. The first one is for the Gettysburg Interloop, that the amount that you see there, that 902,000, just to remind you, is, is 50% of the grant application. That would be, there's a 50% commitment for the large ARPA grant application. The total project, or H2O, water resource-related component of that project was about 1.8 million, so half of it is 902,000. I also want to remind you that the application was put in the name of the Borough, since the Borough technically owns the facilities, but we know that the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority is assisting with that, and we also know we have other grant applications in the process, and we're hoping that that 902,000 may need to be covered by other grants or somewhat by the Stormwater Authority. So, but again, the Borough is, since, since you're the owners of it for all intensive purposes, the, the motion has to be made here by the Borough Council and not the Stormwater Authority. The other one is for Stevens Run channel walls. We found some sections of the walls where we're pretty confident that we own them. That's within the right of ways of our alleys, basically. So we were looking at, that total grant application can be up to $500,000. We were able to find close to $500,000 worth of walls that need to be replaced or repaired. The 424,000 is the amount of the application that we would get from the Commonwealth Authority. That one only has a 15% match. So the balance between the 424,000 and 500,000 would be the Borough's commitment. It's a pretty small commitment from the Borough on that one. So I believe that is it, unless you have any other questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Clayball?
Okay, so these resolutions essentially just relate to what we passed in December. Can I have someone make that first motion for the large?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution requesting a COVID-19 ARPA PA water grant of $902,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B stormwater improvements. And acknowledging the Borough's authorization, made it the December 12th, 2022 council business meeting to submit for said grant and to designate Charles Gable, Borough Manager, and Chad Clayball, Borough Engineer, as the officials to execute and deliver all documents and agreements between the Borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority, and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, either Mr. Moon or Mr. Carr, your choice. Questions or comments related to this grant? Okay, we'd already kind of taken the major step in this. If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have the motion for the smaller H2O grant, please.
Try to make a motion to adopt a resolution requesting a PA Small Water and Sewer Program Grant of $424,995.80 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Stevens Run Channel Wall Rehabilitation, and acknowledging the Borough's authorization, made it the December 12th, 2022 council business meeting, to submit for said grant and to designate Charles Gable, Borough Manager, and Chad Clayball, Borough Engineer, as the officials to execute and deliver all documents and agreements between the Borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority, and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments about this Small Water and Sewer Program Grant? All right, if not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Clayball this evening? Okay, Chief Glenny is unable to join us this evening, but you have his written report. Madam Mayor, would you like to comment?
Yes, one of the things we have is written report, and I don't think it was brought up at a Borough Council meeting. We received a grant from the Pennsylvania Crime and Commission Department, and it's an amount of $126,593. We talked about it at our Borough Leadership Meeting, and it was shy of what the $20,000 request was. So it was from PCCD. So that's a good thing for the Borough to go to the Police Department. We're still in the process of sorting out how it can be used, but one of the things is it's supposed to have retention bonuses, but I don't know if that's going to be in the final document. And the other thing we met with Wellspan Vice President Mike Codliano and Wellspan's Government Relations Representative, and we talked about possibility of getting some funding from the hospital, which they did many years ago. And we just talked about relationships between Wellspan and the Police Department and their Security Department.
All right, very good. Any questions related to the Police Department?
Oh, excuse me. And we, and we talked about this. We're starting the process of, about the two new officers, the two additional officers, and we talked about that in Borough Leadership Meeting, and how the process should go from here.
Yeah, that's something we'll probably, if we are able to progress at a good pace, hopefully we'll be having a motion in February to get that process moving. But we have to make some adjustments and deal with things because of hiring non-certified individuals. So we're trying to get the pieces of the puzzle in place between the mayor, the chief, Charles, Sarah, myself, probably Kara, to make that all happen. So it'd be nice if it happens in February, we'll, we'll see how it goes here, getting all the pieces in place with civil service to make that work.
All right, that takes us to the manager and treasurer. Sarah, Charles?
I don't have anything else to report, other than what we have here.
Okay.
Aside from my written report, I just would highlight some of the financial numbers for the Borough and our, and the general fund as of the end of 2022, 1.32 million at our disposal as liquid cash. There's another 948,000 and change in our reserve fund under the general fund budget, or accounts, rather. And I would also just highlight that Fund 30 Capital Reserve Fund is beginning to increase in value as planned per council's directive as use of ARPA funds. So there is now 550,000 at, that would essentially be unrestricted for capital projects. So we start talking about these grants coming in, and we have a local match, that's where that would be coming from, that account, and so we want to make sure that continues to increase.
Set projects, basically.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Gable not related to the motions? We can kind of revisit that later, too, but Ms. Butterfield?
I just have two comments, two really positive things in your report. Please thank Kara for all the work done on the employee handbook. That's wonderful, the progress that's been made on that. And the other thing, I was really happy to see that you attended a farewell lunch for Ben Thomas of Cumberland Township. He's been easy to work with in several projects I've had with him, and I hope you extend it to him our best wishes on his retirement.
Ben, as a manager over, over in Cumberland, and I have had a longstanding relationship, and we would meet fairly regularly with lunch before COVID, and so this was a good opportunity to kind of put an exclamation point on his tenure. He was definitely good for Cumberland and a good partner here for the Borough. I haven't publicly mentioned the Employee Handbook, because it's not quite ready for prime time yet, but since Counselor Butterfield brought it up, it will be coming to a workshop near you pretty soon.
Yeah, and I think we're, it's been close to 15 years.
Yeah, it's first, 2008, I think, was the last review, the employee manual, yeah.
Yeah, so something we'll need to touch, so.
Yeah.
Glad we're getting there, and that's, that was one of the things, when we went to, to hire that person in HR, it was important that we kind of shifted some of the responsibilities so that we can get to projects like that, that have just not been able to really be addressed.
All right, our first motion is a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
So moved.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Burr, with a second. Questions or comments about the bills and payrolls this month? All right, if not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, someone make the motion for the transfer of funds?
I'll make a motion to transfer the sum of $25,082 from the Borough's general fund account to the Capital Projects Fund and to modify the Borough's budget for fiscal year 2023 accordingly. The aforementioned sum of $25,082 was awarded to the Borough of Gettysburg by the County of Adams from a portion of the county's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds for the purpose of reimbursing the Borough for lost liquid fuels funds from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Questions or comments? This is where the county had to divide up the ARPA funds they received. All right, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next for Pensioner McKinney?
I'll make a motion to authorize COLA increase for retired police pensioner Douglas McKinney to be paid from the police pension plan effective January 1, 2023.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to authorize the COLA. We discussed a few months ago, this deals with the date of retirement of each of these individuals. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. McKinney has his COLA. The police pension resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to excuse the police for making contributions to the police pension fund for 2023.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution to exclude the, excuse the police for making contributions to the police pension fund. Would note in honor of Graham Weaver that this is a contractually required motion. All right, any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, takes us on to Mr. Butterfield, the zoning hearing board.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing John D. Butterfield as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Zoning Hearing Board for a five-year term commencing in January 2023 and expiring in January 2028.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Question or comments? Butterfield's been long-serving here. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Mrs. Butterfield abstains, please note. All right, next, Mr. Lawver, the Stormwater Authority.
I would make a motion to appoint John D. Lawver Jr. as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority for a five-year term commencing in January 2023 and expiring in January of 2028.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Lawver to the Stormwater Authority. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. I just want to say thank you, John, after a lifetime of serving this Borough, that you are willing to continue doing so in this capacity. We are very grateful for your service.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, very good.
Hope there's still be a lot in 2028.
Yes.
Well, that's one way to look at it.
There you go.
Me, too. Hope you all are. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thanks. All right, and Tammy Murdock for the Tax Bureau. I'll take that as the alternate.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tammy Murdock as a representative to the York Adams Tax Bureau and to appoint Lisa Angstadt as an alternative representative to the York Adams Tax Bureau.
I want to apologize, I mispronounced her name. It's Murdock. No, I led you to do that. That's my fault. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
This is one that's important because we have to, they have to have a quorum, and that becomes an issue for them. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and likewise for the Tax Collection Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tammy Murdock as a voting delegate to the Adams County Tax Collection Committee and to appoint Lisa Angstadt as an alternate voting delegate to the Adams County Tax Collection Committee.
Okay, are we second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Reports, liaisons, Mrs. Sellers, Main Street.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone. I'll go back to wrap up 2022 real quick. 1,324 volunteer hours in 2022, that's $39,653.80 worth of free work that was done in the borough. So kudos to our volunteers that step up to do many things on behalf of the beautification and other projects in our downtown. Obviously, the Christmas Festival media, so the reach is growing exponentially. Estimates are between about 7,500 to 10,000 people attending over the weekend. 91%, these are based on surveys that we put out to attendees on social media, Instagram, Facebook, et cetera. 91% of the people that came planned to return this year, so a good return rate. 87% came to shop and spend money. 59% stayed the night, so that's excellent for hotel numbers. 56% traveled 25 miles or more to get here, and 52% spent more than $150 while they were here. 44% of businesses reported that they had increased in sales since, as compared to 2019, which was the first, or the last, rather, full festival that was held. 29% were local, Gettysburg Adams County residents, and 26% came with three or more people. You know, large groups were very common, people that came with, you know, five or 10, or at a cousin's reunion, or a girlfriend's weekend, or, you know, met family in town. It was great. So we're already planning for 2023. My plea would be to the community, you are all invited, businesses, organizations, churches, school groups, choirs, entertainment of all kinds. I'm certainly reaching out, and the committee will be doing so as well, but you don't have to wait for that. Please contact me if you have ideas. We certainly want to see those. And that segues into another big Christmas thing that's happening, starting like very soon, as President Heiser mentioned, is the actors for the Christmas movie are going to be coming to town very soon, and that filming will start, and that's why we have asked businesses to please remain decorated through January, which is not what we normally do. But as we're sort of extending the season for that backdrop, as they've already used the Christmas Festival as well as Tuba Fest to provide kind of the B-roll footage for the film, which is pretty cool because it's, you know, it's featuring a lot of our downtown. That's the purpose of the movie, which is exciting. We continue to work with the producers. Main Street does the, we're doing what we can to support that. So as that backdrop continues, we really are looking forward to 2023's festival, because when the movie is released in the fall, we need to be ready with an impressive festival to meet the ambiance that's going to be set by that film. So mark your calendars and please, you know, encourage businesses and others to reach out to Main Street. We will reach out to you, but please don't, don't be shy. We are available and ready to hear from you. So moving into 2023, besides the Christmas Festival, because, you know, as much as I'm Christmas-festived out, we're starting right now. But we received a $50,000 state grant, which is going to be used for a facade improvement grant. There will be an application process for businesses and property owners, so watch for those details. And that will be administered, you know, starting very soon. Those details will go out, and that application process will be made available to businesses. We continue on the third round of the Raze Grant Effort for the Baltimore Street Project. That is a U.S. Transportation, excuse me, Department of Transportation grant that we're putting in for the revitalization of all of Baltimore Street. So none of these grants, as you've heard before, are approved on the first or second rounds. We're hoping that the third time is the charm, so we will keep you all posted. That is due in February, so it's coming up very quickly. Next thing in 2023, there'll be a lot in between, but in October, we're planning a 30th anniversary weekend for the movie Gettysburg. So we're working with Journey Through Hallowed Ground, as well as the American Battlefield Trust to make a celebration weekend, another, another opportunity to bring visitors to our town to really, you know, promote what we do here and have people come and stay. And, you know, we do this all on, with the, with the idea that we're going to stimulate the economy and keep our businesses, keep our businesses thriving and keep our downtown full of visitors and people. So questions, and I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
The Recreation Authority, Mr. Carr.
I have nothing to report right now.
Municipal Authority, Mr. Berger.
Yeah, GMA, we had our, finalized our budget for 2023, keeping consistent what we've been doing the past few years. To keep up with rising costs, inflation, supply-side changes, we had a modest increase of 5% on the water side. We alternate sewer and water every other year. So that's the big thing to report. Also talked to Mark today, and usually early spring, he likes to come in and have the opportunity for us to ask him questions. So that's a good time to think about maybe a workshop in the next few months to talk about all our projects for 2023.
Make a note of that. All right, that takes us then to the bid. Mrs. Butterfield?
Yes, December, as I had mentioned last time, was not the usual meeting. It was the annual meeting in the evening. Todd Mickley was voted in to serve another three-year term, and he'll also continue serving as Vice President. The, there was a unanimous vote to accept the terms of the agreement with the borough concerning back assessments, which Solicitor Eastman had explained to us on two occasions. The next meeting of bid will be this Thursday.
Okay. Takes us to the Boroughs Association. Mayor?
Yes, the next meeting will be next Monday night, and I won't be there.
I was just going to say, I'm like, you're a featured speaker.
Yes. I didn't want to sound like I'm tooting my own horn. It's for the benefit of the borough. I already contacted Mayor Harris, Carol Ballet, telling him I would not be in attendance.
Okay. The COG, Mr. Lawver?
That was a missed, that was a time.
Mrs. Butterfield, I'm sorry, that's the, I knew there was a spot.
It's Mr. John.
I knew there was a place, and I, I did not read my email closely enough on that item. So, Mrs. Butterfield?
There was no meeting in December because it fell on our ice storm day. The next meeting will be the 26th of this month, and new officers will be installed. Scotty Bolton, David Scotty Bolton, has resigned as president, and he'll be replaced by Terry Schroll, S-C-H-R-O-L-L-E, who will be president, and Patricia Smith will continue as treasurer, and Danielle Helwig will continue as secretary. The Subcommittee for COG, the Collaboration Subcommittee on which I serve, met with Marty Qualley on December 20, and we discussed the broadband survey. They're very pleased with the results. Apparently, people really responded to that and answered, and that is needed to apply for grants, because you have to justify why you need them, and they were pleased with those results. And we discussed the future focus of that Subcommittee. That's it.
Okay. Mrs. Lawson's unable to join us this evening. I'm sure she, I spoke with her earlier today, and she certainly wanted to pass along, you know, the importance of the Phase B II progress that we're making. And I know that, as I mentioned earlier, also Mr. Jolins' recognition on Wednesday. ACTPO, Mrs. Butterfield?
Yes, they meet quarterly, and they will meet on the 25th of this month.
Heroin awareness, Mr. Moon?
We did not convene in December. We will be meeting next Tuesday.
Trail feasibility, Mr. Berger?
Nothing to work.
Recycling, Mrs. Butterfield?
Yes, the Borough Recycling Committee sponsors the Arts Council's recyclable art competition and show, and the committee meeting for April's contest will be tomorrow. We'll kick off that, and we're going to emphasize recruiting homeschooled students to enter this year. We've, we've had good luck with the regular schools, but we want to welcome the homeschoolers as well. And then Tuesday, January 17, the Recycling Committee will host waste management representatives and members of borough staff who have interests in our recycling efforts. Council members are welcome to join us if they would like. See me for details.
May I interject to some?
Certainly.
On the agenda here, this should really say overdose awareness task force as opposed to heroin awareness task force.
That must be a copy and paste, too, yeah.
Yeah. The vast majority of overdoses from last year had nothing to do with heroin whatsoever. Opioid overdose is happening in people's homes, and it's happening with drugs that have nothing to do with heroin use or abuse. So if we could make that adjustment, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that must have been on the same.
It was on the January one from last year.
Yep.
When they were transferred over.
Yeah, same template issue. Okay, thank you. So you have the, the Fire Department's report, and the EMS report was not there. I suppose we'll get that next month. Sometimes they're a little behind with that. Elected officials' comments.
The only thing I have to say is I would like to encourage everybody to come out to the Mountain Hall observation of Martin Luther King's birthday. It's at the college. It's in Christ Chapel, and it's from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And I will be joined with local attorney Torian Moses to give the addresses.
Okay, yeah, featured speaker.
And sorry, my voice keeps wailing. I'm getting over a stomach virus. Stay away from me. You have learned to.
Okay. Other elected officials' comments coming on this side? Mrs. Butterfield?
True. At Home in Adams County will meet via Zoom on the 23rd. They continue to be active, and it's, a lot of it is due to Stacy Rice tears it, and she's very good at organizing and getting people fired up. The other thing, the Assembly of South Central PA met on the 21st and emphasizing some of the things that Jill pointed out about the movie company. We go around the room and tell what's happening in our municipality, and everybody listened politely to the road construction stories and the bridge repair stories, and then they got to Gettysburg, and I said, "They're making a movie in Gettysburg." And everybody sat up, and people went, "Ooh," and one lady said, "My husband watches the Hallmark Channel every time there's a new movie." So we were the stars of the COG meeting.
All the, yeah, I saw the, like, the very short byline on the film, like, all the, all the great Hallmark-esque elements. It's going to be a family issue and whatever else. I was like, ah, yes. Perfect. All right. Other comments down this side?
Yes. Mayor Freeling, I was informed earlier today that it is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
Yes.
Would you please pass on to the chief and to the department the appreciation of me and I'm sure my colleagues for the professionalism and dedication that your department shows at keeping our community safe and orderly? I want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. That's why we're wearing blue today for the police. It is we were told to do that.
Who's "we"?
America.
Okay. Mr. Berger, you're cheating. God. It's like even a blue shirt. Is that? Steven, is that shirt blue? Yeah, you really got it. Do you have any comments, Mr. Berger? All right, if not, we will go to public comment. This is our open public comment session. Again, the five minutes podium, name and address.
Sorry, Mr. President Heiser.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carter.
I wanted to just mention a thank you to our, to employees of the Public Works Department for anniversaries that they're having this month, 26 years. Wayne Heflin and our Public Works Director, Rob Harbaugh, 18 years. Thank you for your service to our borough, especially during the special event seasons that we've been going through lately. Thank you.
Mr. Harbaugh is very, I don't know how to say it, very gentle and kind about how he phrases, like, "Yeah, we're still moving things," and, yeah. But it is, it helps keep the community safe, and it's much appreciated. So now, public comment. Anyone for public comments? All right.
Sorry, I didn't know about the blue. Apologize for that. But yes, thank you very much for everything that law enforcement does for the community. "Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm requesting that the zoning text amendment for the English event language be modified to reflect the actual discussions by council as a whole and not the current language. The current language in the draft ordinance was noted that I requested the limit on my business operation to two events per month, a language that was shown through attached right-to-no request I did not request. I would like the language corrected and actual alternative language included in the draft ordinance for review at the 28th January 2003 council workshop. I'm also requesting that if necessary, a special council meeting prior to the next council workshop or a special council meeting after the next council workshop be convened to facilitate finalizing the draft language for a motion at the 13th February 2023 meeting. Zoning text language to be included for discussion at the January 28th workshop. I'm requesting, correct the restriction from only two events per month to read, restrict large outdoor tenant events over 75 people to two times per month with no other event occurrence restrictions. Include the Planning Commission's recommendation of let the parcel size dictate the tent size. Add alternative language changing from a special exception to a permitted use, as the Central Adams County Joint Comprehensive Plan targets my parcel in a downtown core recommended for future growth and economic growth, and it's located in a mixed zoning district. I appreciate Mr. Moon's comments from the last council meeting, and I appreciate everyone's time and effort, working especially with the borough staff since November of 2021, on adaptively reusing the Gettysburg Academy property. The property is located within a mixed-use zoned area of the borough, an area designated in the Elm Street Plan of the borough. Also, the property is in what the Central Adams Joint Comprehensive Plan for 2019 calls the downtown core. According to this plan, my property is located two blocks inside the outer boundary of an area targeted for future growth and economic growth. Quote, "This one's sure that future growth, growth concerns in the areas where land is, where there is broad support for development. The plan also emphasizes in multiple areas to, quote, 'support or facilitate the efforts of owners to continue using their historic properties or to adapt them for new use.'" "I'm trying to preserve an expansive green space while adaptively reusing a property in an area that, too differently, publicly reviewed and borough-adopted plans specifically recommend the following: direct economic development efforts in the downtown core, a designated growth area, while using context-sensitive design elements. My property is across the street from Old Town Zoning and on the same block as three churches that frequently close the street to vehicle traffic. Promote redevelopment and infill sites within the region over development on new greenfield areas. My property is one of the few remaining historic green spaces within the borough. Limiting my use of the green space to two times per month will leave me with no other choice but to explore other options for the open lot that I'm paying taxes on. Promote context-sensitive design, especially on sites located in transition areas or within..."